Thank you. Roll call, Dan.
Mr. Arico?
Here.
Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Maroney?
Here.
Mrs. Pang?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Here.
Mrs. Matiker?
Here.
All present with Dr. Chen. Thank you. Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News and Tribune and the Star Ledger on September 22nd, 2020, and December 18th, 2020. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. Okay, we're going to go into closed session at this time, so Dan. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, except 231 of Public Laws of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Edison's follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: Attorney, client privilege discussion regarding student matters, Edison-Wentland's contract, bus contracts, litigation brought on by former employees and students, ETEA grievances, perken unfair labor practices, and personnel matters. Under personnel, we will discuss resignations and terminations, retirements, appointments, leaves of aptices, changes of status, longevity, salary adjustments, academic support for students, Title I funded mentoring program, Title III funded ESL homework club, 2021 school year curriculum writers, substitutes, co-curricular changes, and authorization for approval requests for studies to health benefits. Three, is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Dan. Can I have a motion?
Motion move.
Mr. Shi and Ms. Falgouni.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Just to let the public know, we're going to hopefully be out by 7 o'clock, but we will keep you posted for any longer. Thank you. Public for being patient. I need a motion to reconvene.
Motion.
Mr. Shi and Mrs. Conway. Roll call.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Arico?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Back in open session.
All right, Dr. Bragan, recognitions, please.
At this point, we do have a couple of recognitions to go over. The first one I want to read is a resolution, and it states, whereas Beth Maroney during the last six years has served as a member of the Edison Township Board of Education, serving on various committees during her years as a board member, and whereas Beth Maroney has earned the admiration and respect of the community, the state, the students, and whereas Beth Maroney has aggressively met all challenges and has continually represented the school district in the best interest of the students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Edison Township Board of Education extend its congratulations to Beth Maroney for this outstanding commitment to the Edison Township School District, and that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting on this date, and a copy be presented to Beth Maroney with a suitable expression of thanks. Adopted by Edison Township Board of Education, December 22nd, 2020. Congratulations, Beth Maroney.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before moving on to the next recognition, I was asked by a former board member, Frank Healan, if I would read a letter, so I wish the board president, may I be indulged to do something? It says, Dear Dr. Bragan, please commend Beth Maroney for her invaluable contributions to the students, teachers, and parents of the Edison School District. Edison was fortunate indeed to have someone of Beth Maroney's caliber, serving on the Edison Board of Education for more than six years. Beth had been a teacher of English in Bridgewater before coming to teach creative writing in Edison, and serving in administrative capacities in Edison schools, south and north, from pre-K to the high school grade levels. Because of her teaching and administrative experiences in Edison, Beth brought to the school board an uncanny knowledge of the internal workings of the district, and a poignant personal understanding of students, staff, and parents. Beth contributed mightily to the work of the Curriculum and Technology Committee and to the Policy Committee. When Beth was elected to Vice Presidency of the School Board, it was my privilege to collaborate with Beth and the superintendent of schools on critical issues affecting our students and staff. Beth was a person of high integrity and courage who spoke the truth regardless of whether others accepted the truth or not. Edison schools will miss Beth's insights and struggles to relentlessly pursue the path of excellence for our students. Best wishes to Beth for a productive retirement from the board, and to Tom, Shawna, and Jonathan, and most of all, to your lovely granddaughter Lily. Happy Hanukkah, blessed Christmas, and a joyful New Year. God bless. Resolution. Whereas Falgouni Patel during the last three years has served as a member of the Edison Township Board of Education, serving on various committees during her years as a board member, and whereas Falgouni Patel has earned the admiration and respect of the community, the state, and the students, and whereas Falgouni Patel has aggressively met all the challenges and has continually represented the school district in the best interest of the students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Edison Board of Education extend its congratulations to Falgouni Patel for this outstanding commitment to the Edison Township School District, and that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting on this date, and a copy be presented to Falgouni Patel with a suitable expression of thanks. Adopted by the Edison Township Board of Education, December 22nd, 2020. Congratulations. We have one more resolution to read, and as with the others, I do this with a heavy heart. Whereas Daniel P. Michelle has announced his plans to retire on December 31st, 2020, and throughout his 34-year, eight-month career, Daniel P. Michelle, Business Administrator, Board Secretary, has worked tirelessly to promote the values of the business office of the Edison Board of Education. And whereas his contributions as an intelligent, thoughtful, hard-working, detail-oriented, kind, energetic, and generous person who always provided his peers with an open-door policy, Daniel P. Michelle, quote-unquote "Dan," has been a strong advocate for giving nothing less than excellence to all students and staff members of the Edison Board of Education, and he has enriched those fortunate enough to know and work with him. And whereas throughout his career, has experienced many growing pains, including the rebuilding of James Monroe Elementary School after a tragic fire, multiple bond referendum approvals and defeats, a multitude of superintendents, administrators, and board members, the onset of computer technology, and whereas Dan's many years of distinguished public service are a hallmark of exceptional dedication to the public education and to the children of Edison, and his many years of service as business administrator has afforded him countless opportunities to impact public education. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Edison Township Board of Education express its appreciation and gratitude for 34 years and eight months of service to Daniel P. Michelle for this outstanding commitment to the Edison Township School District, and that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the Edison, of the Board of Education meeting on this date, and a copy be presented to Daniel P. Michelle with a suitable expression of thanks. Adopted by the Edison Township Board of Education, December 22nd, 2020. Dan, you will be missed, my friend.
Thank you. I have one member of the public that couldn't be here tonight that wanted me to express his sincere thanks to Dan, and that's Mr. Ralph Bucci. He couldn't make it tonight. He wanted to be here. He was going to try to make it last week, but we had the snowstorm. But he obviously has been a lifelong resident of Edison and has dealt with Dan many, many times. They haven't always agreed, but as Mr. Bucci said, Dan was the utmost professional and respectful person he's ever dealt with, and he really appreciates Dan and all the things Dan has done and the information that he's provided to Mr. Bucci over the many years. So again, Mr. Bucci would like to send his strongest thanks to you, Dan, as well as the whole community and Board of Education. Okay. Board discussion on resolutions only. Any board discussions? Or if you want to comment on where we wait to the end on the recognitions? Okay, so we'll go to public comments. Again, public comments, please raise your hand, come up, identify yourself, and we will take public comments at this time. Yes, Mr. Patel.
What page is the resolution on?
There in the back.
Mohan Patel, Board of Ed, elect. Question on Resolution 5 in regards to the purchase of the property on Calverdav for Menlo Park School. Do we have a price tag on that? And also, do we have a use for that land that we're going to purchase? What are we going to be using it for? That's one. Should I go?
Yeah, go through all your questions. Yep.
In regards to the procurement of the nutrition programs, what has changed from the old policy to the new policy that we're going to be implementing? What are the exact changes? Are we looking at, if we can go over that? And in terms of finance side, there's two dates that you have, 11/23 and 11/24 as the quote given for security from the yeshiva schools. Is there two separate quotes, or is it the same? And if so, what is the total amount that we're looking at for that resolution? It's on page, if you need it. It's under, I think it's the last two, three pages, I believe. The third...
Top of item number.
Yeah. It's under non-public school security aid program items. And the other question was for the quote for Wardlaw Heritage, Gordian, that amount that we're asking for. If this is a private school, why are we paying for their security?
Is that it, Mr. Patel?
Uh, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I'll start off with the land activization. Dr. Bragan?
Yeah, we're looking at the property, there's a church on it now, I think it's our Savior, across the street from Menlo Park Elementary School, and the resolution you see is just applying to the state for approval to proceed with that. It's not accepting it, it's not agreeing to the price, it's not agreeing to anything right now. We're looking at that property, it's 2.83 acres. Right now, it has, I believe, five classrooms inside and a multipurpose room. We haven't delineated exactly what we would use that for currently. We're going to put in the application, and it's going to help with the overcrowding, however we decide we can do that. The Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, if we do decide to officially purchase that, we have to make those decisions on where we would go moving forward. The initial asking price, when we reviewed this, I believe it was in June or July, was 4.5 million. Their asking price now is 2.5 million, so we do think it's a viable option and something that we're looking into, but that resolution is just so we can apply to the state, because without their approval, we can't even proceed with moving forward with it. Regarding the nutrition program, most of that is related to just the legalities of how to apply for the federal and state reimbursements, and there's a couple of different things that we have to do according to meet those new codes. I'll share that with you specifically. If I quoted it off the top of my head, I might get it wrong, but I could share what the old policy was and what the new policy is. For those policies there, there are 15, and 14 are state mandated, so we don't really have a choice, we have to adopt them as they are. A couple had some delineations as far as which grade levels were participating, some of the athletics and things like that, but for most of those policies, they're state mandated, and we didn't have much leeway. But I could definitely go over what the differences are. The quotes?
Yeah, the security account. That's about... Yeah, the security account. This is non-public security money. This is one of the non-public schools that deal with it. These numbers come over from the Educational Services Commission. They send them over to us by email, they go over to my secretary, and she puts them on the agenda. And as you can see, the numbers are identical, except the dates. I think they gave us a new one with the new date, so I think there's only really one of these. I think the one in red is the latest one we received, so we're going to take the first one off.
How about Wardlaw Heritage, Dan?
Wardlaw Heritage, that one, that's a separate school.
Right.
Each one of the schools gets an allocation, and they did increase the amount that they received this year to over $300,000, so to give them some additional security funding. So Wardlaw Heritage is, there's only one for them, isn't there?
One.
27,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only one for them. So that's the amount of money that they want to spend on theirs, and they have a quote from Gordian, which was approved by the Service Commission.
And that, Dan, is required by the state, county?
This is, yes, this is state money that comes to us. We have to handle the POs. We don't get any benefit from it, except for the fact we have to approve and process the paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
Just a pass-through, Dan?
All right.
Banker, 318 West Gate Drive. So this is regarding the policy use of school facilities, and we have made a request to some of the Board of members that some of our Edison school kids are not able to use the soccer fields and tennis fields, and they are going to Southland Fields, and you know, some other Wardlaw, the private schools, and all that stuff. So why should our kids go there and be questioned by the other people? So the policy doesn't show that, how our Edison school kids can play in our own soccer turf, in our own tennis courts. I hope this policy covers, at least the turf should be open to our own school kids after school program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Go.
What page do we start?
What?
I can't find where it starts. Where does this start? I want to complain about some things too.
Is it a resolution? Okay. You could do open comments. Yeah. All right? So...
I'm trying to save my time. I'm trying to get more time.
All right, close the public portion. At this time, we're going to start voting on the resolutions. So under item nine, we're going to do the Personnel Report, Labor Relations. Can I have a motion for just that first part right there? Aye, or one?
Motion move.
Mr. Shi? Mrs. Patel? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
I'm thinking.
Oh. Pondering.
Yes, for the last time.
Okay. Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
So carry.
Thank you. Then item number two, Administration, A, B, C, and D. Motion, please.
Motion move.
Mr. Shi and Mrs. Pang.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Abstain.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Arico?
Yes.
So carry.
Thank you. Number three, Curriculum and Instruction, A and B. Motion, please.
Motion move.
Mr. Shi and Mrs. Pang.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Abstain.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Arico?
Yes.
So carry.
Item number four under there, Pupil Services, A, Out of District Placements. Can I have a motion?
Motion move.
Mr. Shi and Dr. Chen.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Abstain.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Arico?
Yes.
So carry.
And last one, Finance, A, B, and C. A motion, please. Dr. Chen and Mrs. Pang.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Abstain.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
So carry.
Thank you. Committee reports, Curriculum and Technology.
So I have two reports from two different days. Please bear with me, it's kind of long. The first meeting took place on December 10th via Zoom. In attendance were Gail Palakowski, Baninder Mahabir, Falgouni Patel, Elizabeth Conway, Yuna Chen, and myself. The meeting started at 1:30, ended at 3 o'clock. The first item was revisions to curriculum. The name of financial literacy course has now been changed to Personal Finance. Colleges refer to the course as Personal Finance, and that was the reason for change. The curriculum was also rewritten to meet the state standards. The Curriculum Guide was written for Robotics II by the new 21st Century Supervisor. For grade 11th and 12th English, the curriculum will be updated to include African-American, Asian, and Latin American literature. New novels and texts reflecting diverse culture will be included. This will be implemented starting September 2021 for 11th and 12th grade. The Calculus I academic level, this is an already approved old course that is being brought back to ensure Level 1 and Level 2 students are also able to access Calculus. The course will be for juniors and seniors. The Curriculum Guide has been recently updated. This class will be eligible for the MCC program. The committee was informed of some new courses. The first one is Calculus III. This is replacing Applied Calculus, which was an ambiguous course and often not recognized by colleges. Calculus III has a defined curriculum and is recognized by the colleges. This will provide our students with more opportunities. The second course is Integrated Science. There is a three-year science requirement for graduation. This course is also meant for seniors who want to take a fourth year of science, which is not an AP course. Some new textbooks will be needed. Calculus III and Integrated Science courses will need new textbooks. In addition, the district ran a pilot on AP Physics I and II last year at Edison High School, because the current textbook is no longer aligned to the AP exam. According to students who participated in the program, they were over-prepared, and that the book provided more help with critical and analytical thinking. Students piloting the textbook scored higher on the AP exam. The approval for textbooks for all the three courses, Calculus III, AP Physics I and II, and Integrated Science, will be on the agenda at the next board meeting in January. The administration also discussed middle school math sequence. The committee spoke about the need to reintroduce the three levels of math in sixth grade. However, the administration said research shows that putting diverse students in a class means that expectations become higher for all students, and was not in favor for three levels. Nevertheless, the administration thought that the committee's idea of some pre-algebra over the summer was good. They will be asking the supervisors to look into it. The additional work over the summer would allow Math 6 students to move up to Algebra I in grade seven. The administration was also informed, the administration also informed the committee of a new high school math sequence. For PSAT, the grade 10 PSAT will be held on Saturday, February 27th. Grade 8 PSAT has been postponed because of issues with College Board. There is a high chance that the test may be canceled. A new program on student assistance has been developed for students who are struggling. A new special Saturday class is being introduced. This is to help bridge the existing gaps for struggling students. Small groups will meet on Saturday in the evenings. The administration also informed the committee that they will be discontinuing the expository writing at the high school because of low enrollment and high cost. The committee discussed introducing more bridge courses over the summer to improve skills, get a head start, and even for meeting prerequisites for certain courses, or to jump a level at the beginning of a new school year. The committee discussed the need for uniformity in grading practices, rigor testing across similar level classes. The committee was informed that no decision had been made on placements. Other concerns that were discussed include non-stop classes in middle school until 1 p.m., which can sometimes become overwhelming, and technology and connectivity issues. The committee was informed that Exact Path replaced Ten Marks and Lexica in 2019-20 school year. This was already being used for skills practice and language during the last school year. The cost remains the same regardless of the number of tools used from the program. This year, Exact Path was used in place of the STAR test. Parents were sent a letter before the test was administered. The committee was given an update on the AP Research, Capstone Research Project. This is a two-year AP seminar and research program. Students have to reach out to guidance to enroll in the program. Regarding FB LA, this is a club at the high school level. The committee expressed concern that students whose schedules did not permit them to take a business course were not being allowed to enroll in the program. The administration also informed the committee about the shortage of Spanish teachers. JMI Spanish teacher is on long-term leave, and the district is unable to recruit any Spanish teacher to fill her position. The committee asked the administration to provide more flexibility in curriculum scheduling. This includes ability to take AP classes more critical to students' long-term goals before non-critical ones that can be relegated to the senior year. For example, taking Bio AP after Bio Honors rather than waiting to take Chemistry or Physics. That's all for the December 10th meeting. We had another curriculum meeting on December 15th. In attendance were Dr. Bragan, Gail Palakowski, Elizabeth Conway, Shivi Madhugur, and Yuna Chen attended remotely via Zoom. The meeting started at 4 and ended at 5:30. To give students an opportunity to further their skills and career opportunities, the administration invited eSports integration to give a presentation. eSports has become a multi-billion dollar industry, generating thousands of jobs annually. Positions in this industry, however, are underfilled because of the lack of trained personnel with requisite skill set. The committee was informed about a four-year curriculum that could assist students in developing skills to pursue this field. Some existing courses on statistics, languages, and coding could be complemented with courses on marketing, broadcasting, filmmaking, social media, gaming, production, et cetera, to build foundations for a successful career. The course was recommended for both high schools and also as a club. The committee recommended eSports integration to make a presentation to the Facilities and Finance Committee. That would be all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions from the board? Dr. Chen, any questions?
Can I ask a question about the Exact Path? Just what exactly is the reason that STAR is replaced by Exact Path? Because as far as I understand, STAR is actually have a lower price than Exact Path, which costs, you know, STAR has been used for many years, and it has been used in the placement criteria. And now we changed to Exact Path, which costs more, actually about, yeah, from 78K to 93K. And we would have to change the placement criteria somehow. So what, I just don't know.
So I asked this question, and I was told that Exact Path actually replaced Lexica and Ten Marks last year. So we were already paying for Lexica. Instead of paying Lexica and Ten Marks, we were paying Exact Path. And no matter how many tools you use, you, from Exact Path, the cost remains the same. So, so now we are using it as a screening as well as an assessment tool. It does not change the price. So that, so now you're not paying for STAR anymore, but you're using that, you know, what we were paying for Lexica and Ten Marks, we're using that for STAR, for this year as well.
Yeah, but Ten Marks and Lexia are not really used in placement criteria. And we, it has been stopped for a couple of years, and we're okay without it. I just don't think we need to test our students more than needed. You know, they're already having a lot of tests and all that. So getting rid of Ten Marks and Lexia is, I didn't see that doing any harm to the stu, to our students, especially the younger students, the first grade and second graders. They don't need so much test at this young age. So I just don't think, I see the needs for another totally brand-new test for Exact Path.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. The, in your report, you mentioned several new textbooks will be introduced next year. Do you have a, any rough idea on the price tag for that?
No. I don't, I don't have. I mean, I think this will come for approval next year, so I think the facilities and, it'll be presented to the Facilities and Finance Committee next year.
So we have to be budget.
Yeah, this was something that came up in the curriculum.
Yeah, I know, but just wanted to ask for a rough idea how much we're talking about.
Yeah, it would be presented to the Facilities and Finance Committee in January.
I think I heard at least three textbooks has come in. Each of these textbooks, it's, we all know when we switch a textbook, it costs a lot of money, so.
We, we actually need to look to see if we can get some online services, too.
Yeah.
We can get those numbers, though. Mr. Shi, as we build a budget for next year, we'll get the curriculum budget, and we'll break it down by item on what those textbooks would cost.
Yeah, sure. I just see if we have any rough ideas, just some, get some ideas.
I could get that, too. We'll get a rough idea, we could share with the board, a rough idea, right? We wouldn't have the exact numbers. I try to get, I'll try to get that tomorrow for the board.
Yeah, just ballpark. So the other thing about in the, in the latest, the Curriculum Committee Report about eSports, we introduce that as a course for high schools. Do we have the staff to teach those courses?
What was discussed, Dr. Bregan, you want to respond to that?
Sure. You know, we're just in a preliminary process of exploring the eSports industry. It's something to which I was not really well-versed until a few months ago, and it seems like it's a really booming industry, and it's, actually generates more money and revenue than the motion picture industry. And we had a presentation from a company called Horizon, Horizon, not Horizon. And, you know, some of the things that they've done in universities, such as University of Delaware, other schools in New Jersey and Pennsylvania, as well as they're planning on putting an eSports arena at King University. So we wanted to further the discussion and the dialogue, and we thought it'd be a good idea to, to bring it first to the Curriculum Committee because it's curriculum-related as well as a potential sport and after-school activity as well. And then the next stage would be to bring it to the Finance and Facilities Committee to see what their thoughts are. But we do have staff members now who could transition into some of those curricular, and then we'll see where it goes from there. In my own experience with these technology, these innovative things, many of our younger teachers would be the ones that we would look to do that, although I don't want to be any discrimination due to age, but I found that to be the case. And while there's not a certification per se for those exact criteria or curriculum that we mentioned, it does overlap in the mathematics field, in the computer science field, even in the English field and some of the other technologies.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to clarify also that Ten Marks and Lexica are not a testing tool, it's a learning tool. And Exact Path has a learning tool as well as a testing tool. So STAR is a testing tool, Ten Marks and Lexica are learning tools, and Exact Path gives you both a learning tool as well as a testing tool.
Thank you. Any other questions for curriculum? No? All right. Thank you. All right, now we'll have open discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, upcoming meeting dates. January 4th, Monday, at 7:00 p.m. right here, we'll have our reorganization meeting. It's a special night. We swear in our three elected board members, Mr. Shi, Ms. White, and Mr. Patel, Mr. Patel. So we'll welcome them on January 4th, and hopefully everyone can come out and support our new Board of Education members. Then on Thursday, January 21st of the new year, and actually it's January 4th of 2021, it says 2020, but it's actually 2021. I just caught that. Thursday, January 21st, 2021, JP Stevens High School will be our caucus meeting at 7:00 p.m. And on Monday, January 26th?
No.
No, why is it Monday? I thought it were Tuesdays.
Tuesday.
Should be Tuesday. Is Tuesday the 26th, though?
Yes.
It is? Okay. Thank you, Andy. So it's Tuesday, January 26th, 2021, not 2020, JP Stevens High School at 7:00 p.m. And again, as of now, we're going to do it in person, but things can always, always change, so check the website. All right, board member, open discussion. I'm going to start up on top, Dr. Chen.
I, I just want to say that I'll thank Mrs. Fal Patel and, and Mrs. Beth Maroney and, and Mr. Daniel Machaut for their service to our district. And I, I learned a lot from them, they are great people, and thank them, and I wish they all the best in their future endeavors as well.
Thank you, Dr. Chen. Ms. Peng?
Yes, same here, I just want to say big thank you to Dan, because no matter what kind of question I ask him, he usually just get back to me within six hours, every single time. I just, I don't know how he managed to do that, but I really appreciate that.
He doesn't go home.
So Superman.
He doesn't want to go home.
And also, big thank you to Beth and Fal. I'm a parent and I'm a full-time worker, too. I know how tough this could be, and I really appreciate their service, and it's been a pleasure working with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peng. Mr. Shi?
All right, so actually, there was a little typo on the resolution for Beth. She has more than six years, six and a half years. She, she was elected on April, then we got the, the election moved to, to November, so it's six and a half years.
Thanks.
Right? So you got assured for, for six months of service. So, you know, you know, Beth, you know, it's a long time, you know, in the district, and the teacher, administration, administrators, and principals then come on the board. It's a full circle. You know, really nice working with you. You'll be really missed, and enjoy the retirement totally from Edison and spend a quarter of the time with the family and the younger ones, and just really enjoy that. And Falguni, three years, one term, although she does not speak that much in public in the meetings, but she has done a lot behind the scenes, okay? The policies and the stuff that she had done this year, it's amazing. People do not see her speaking, but the contribution she has made to the district is, you know, you, you can't put in words. So Fal, really miss you. Then, Dan, 34 and a half, more than 34 years, all in Edison, all in Edison. You know, you talk about that, you come in, it's 8:00 he's here, you leave here, 9:00 he's still in the office. And sometimes I pass the office, I see his car parked over the special spot. It's always illegal parked, anyway. But he's, you know he's there. So just like, you know, Mrs. Peng said, every time you ask him the question, he comes up with the right answer. And the history that he has about the district, about what has happened in the past 30 years, nobody can replace that. You know, so really sorry to see you go, Dan. We always welcome you to, to come to our district. I know you don't play golf and the other stuff, I don't know, what are you going to do when you're retired? You know, when you go home, you know, sitting at home during the day, what are you going to do? So I know you could go only so many times to Atlantic City, but, but really, really miss you. The knowledge, as I said, it's irreplaceable. Wish you best of luck, and enjoy your, your retirement, and just take care of yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shi. Ms. Shivi Madhukar?
I just wrote three small things on three of them. So I'll start with Beth. I got to know Beth when I ran for the Board of Education for the first time in November 2014. She sat next to me at the very first ETA, EA debate. While we were contenders for the same position, and even though I did not know her, she never felt like a stranger, and made me feel instantly comfortable with her very warm smile. Beth has been a solid pillar for the past six years, now corrected six and a half years. She has been very committed to the position and has never been afraid to stand up and be vocal for what she believes in. Her experience as an educator has helped our students and staff in more ways than one can imagine. She has been working tirelessly for a long time, and more recently with the Wingman Program that she was instrumental in bringing to Edison. After all her hard work, she deserves a break, and so she can spend time with her granddaughter. She will be sorely missed, I wish her all the best. Moving on to Fal. I consider Fal to be a silent warrior, intelligent, farsighted, and very persistent. If you give her a job, she won't stop until she's got it done. She's, has always stood for what she believes in, even if that meant standing alone. Her departure is a terrible loss for all Edison students and staff. I hope this is just a short break, and that she'll come back to serve our town again. So I'm not going to say goodbye, but Beth will definitely miss her as a colleague on the board. And finally, Dan, frankly, I don't know what we are going to do without you. I wish there was a way to stop you from leaving. You've been a permanent fixture, and it's going to be odd to not see you around. People have come and people have gone, but you've been there always. But this is your decision, and we must respect that. More than anything else, after all these years of hard work, you deserve a vacation. So I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Farco. When I was elected to the board, I finally went on to the other side of the table. And it's amazing how nine elected board members come together from all different aspects of life. But we come together, we discuss, we question, and I feel lucky to have spent my first two years on the board with both Beth and Falguni. From Beth, I've gained much more experience and advice as to do what I feel best for the district. Sometimes not always in agreement with everyone else, but she has taught me to stand up for what I believe and to don't give up. And so I take her knowledge and her expertise with me, and I will always have you in the back of my mind as to what would Beth be telling me. And then when I think of Falguni, everybody thinks Falguni is so quiet. I guess they don't know the hours and hours we spend on the phone sometimes into the middle of the night, where my husband goes, what could you two possibly be talking about so long? But as a young, fresh, intelligent young lady, I've learned so much, and we've shared so much, and I truly appreciate a friendship that has developed. And I've always, already told her that those phone calls should not end. Maybe the topic might end, but the phone calls will never end. So I thank you both for being on the board, and I wish you all the luck. Beth, you haven't seen work yet. I've got two of them. You've got one, and it's not easy. So enjoy every minute with Lily, but you will get a good night's sleep.
Thank you, Ms. Conway.
I'm not done.
Oh, I thought you were done. Oh, you forgot Dan. How come you didn't mention Dan?
You cut me off.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Dan, what can I say? How many years have Carol and I gone to board meetings, even before we came on this side of the table and were questioning you, and never once have you ever said, I don't know? It's always either the answer right away, or I will let you know, and soon enough we get the answer. You're always the one to be able to explain and help us understand the history of the district and where we're going and why, and always able to put a dollar sign to it with the most knowledge as to the best way to spend every dime of our money. I truly appreciate everything you've done for us. That's why I said no last month, but I guess it didn't work. But I wish you luck. It's your time to enjoy, and I don't know what Bernadette has planned. But good luck to you, Dan, you deserve it.
Thank you.
I thank you. And I'm still not done. I would just like to say, I watched the Edison Dance Group perform through an email, Mr. Ross. It was fabulous, and that's why I wanted everyone to be able to share it. And you got to watch it on a bigger screen than I actually did. It was phenomenal, and it just goes to show us what continues to go on in our district, which is wonderful. And the only thing that I was a little depressed about was Carol and I usually are very busy this month, going from one thing to the next thing, and the events, each one is better than the next. So I would hope that, Patrick, we could get as many of the events onto the website, nod, yes, thank you, to share with the general public, because each and every one of them is just phenomenal. And I appreciate sharing with us and being able to share with the whole district all the great things that are still going on and will continue to go on in this district. Okay, Ralph, I'll shut it down.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Podolski?
Your turn.
Although I've only been on the board for about a year, I've attended these meetings regularly for about 30 years, so it seems like I have known Dan Michaud forever. As a teacher here in Edison, I had a rule. When in doubt, ask Dan about anything important. Dan always got back to me, and he always had the right answer. Those are two things that are hard to consistently find anywhere. In today's world, even harder to find. When my daughter started school here in Edison, the district tagline was nothing less than excellence. And that phrase has always described Dan Michaud to a T. Without a doubt, Dan will be missed here when he retires. But he has earned his exit ticket many times over. Oh, I know he will still get calls and questions once he's retired, and I know he will answer, also on his time. The time has come for Dan to enjoy life and reap the benefits he has earned through his dedicated and exceptional service to our school district. So Dan, enjoy your retirement, and if we should meet by chance one future day, which I hope we will, the hardest question I will ask you is, hey, Dan, how you doing? Thanks for the memories.
Thank you.
Tonight, we also have two board members ending their terms and moving on with their lives. I have enjoyed working along with them both this year as colleagues on the Board of Ed. I've known Beth Maroney for many years and in many roles, mainly as an active part of our schools, always going above and beyond the responsibilities of her job. After the Sandy Hook tragedy, the effort to help the children affected by this heinous event became a huge part of her life. She made a difference as a leader of the Wingman Program that changed many children's lives for the better and for good. All that while never dropping the ball on her Board of Ed member responsibilities. As she steps beyond Edison, filling the role of grandma, I know she may miss us, but she will have her heart and her hands filled with that adorable little girl. As it should be, Beth, it has been great working with you. Enjoy this exciting future. Falguni Patel has served our students and community exceptionally well as a Board of Ed member. As a new parent, she has not yet experienced our district as a parent, but that time will come. I have been very fortunate to serve on the Policy Committee led by Fal. I have been very fortunate to serve on the Policy Committee led by Fowl, who is also an attorney. Policies are the way school districts are governed. Our rules, based in law, lead us through the chaos and give us direction. Fowl has been a diligent, inspiring, and dedicated Board of Ed member and we are lucky to have had her these past three years. I hope one day in the future she will return to a leadership role on our board. Thanks, Fowl. It has been great working with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bedoski. I'm going to speak and then I'll let the honorees speak. First, Beth. Six and a half years I've been here for most of those years with you. We worked very well together. We had some ups and downs, but we've always been respectful of each other and always come out with an agreement that we all can live with for the betterment of Edison Township. So Beth, I would love to thank you for all your years here and appreciate your dedication to our students and our district. Thank you very much. Fowl, I think someone said it best. People think Fowl's quiet. Well, here's kind of a quote from my family. "You speak to Fowl more than you speak to us." Fowl, when she has a question or a concern or something she disagrees with, she don't hesitate to call me or other board members and we talk things out. Fowl has never been disrespectful, never been argumentative, name call, anything like that. But when she has something to say, she doesn't have a problem picking up the phone and calling me or anyone. That is a true example of a real strong leader. And Fowl was a strong leader as my vice president this year and I appreciate everything you've done for me and the rest of the board in the district. Thank you, Fowl. Dan, this is my third time with you. We've gone a few superintendents. I think Mr. Percy, Dr. Capraro, Mr. Dimusio, Carol Toth. So you name it, we've been together for some time. My close to 10 years' experience on the board. Again, as everyone has stated, if you need something regarding the budget or the numbers or history, as Mr. Shi said, Dan's the guy to go to. You know, Dan's been here longer than any other administrator, I think, in the district, as far as I know. You know, that meaning, you know, central office and, I think, building level over 34 years. So Dan, you're going to be sorely missed. Hopefully, we can catch lunch every once in a while as well as Fowl and Beth. And I wish you the best in health and retirement and enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Beth, you're up.
As I was getting ready for tonight and thinking about the things that I wanted to say at the end of my career on the Board of Education, I had a lot of flashes of memory. And even sitting here right now, I look at Gail Polikowski, with whom I taught my second and third years in Edison. And we were both in the English department. And what I remember most about Gail was her choreography and songwriting skills for our farewell to Dr. Robinson, our principal, to which she choreographed the dance "To Tits and Ass" with the fan dance. So that is one of my favorite memories. And Matt Revneck, when I look at you, I remember you as a student teacher, all svelte and adorable and bright-eyed and ready to, you know, fight the world and here you are still fighting and thank you. There are so many memories. Right in this very auditorium, Dr. Kreske addressed the staffs of both Edison and J.P. Stevens around 1989, 1990, somewhere in there. And he talked about how someday soon Edison was going to catch up to East Brunswick with computer technology. And it took us till Dr. O'Malley got here to nearly catch up to East Brunswick when we instituted our one-to-one computer program. Right after I got elected to the Board of Ed, I want to say like maybe not even, no, not even a week. I was elected on Tuesday. On Saturday night, we got the message that James Monroe School was burning to the ground. And I came that following Monday night, hadn't even been a board electee for a week, to listen to the parents who were devastated, the children who were devastated, the staff, you know, with the loss of the school. And going through the process of rebuilding James Monroe was one of the outstanding moments of my time on the Board of Ed. We've continued to grow population-wise in our diversity and in all the great ways that a school system should grow, but we still haven't really addressed the problem of the overcrowding. We talk about it a lot. We've run bond issues, you know, to try to address the situation and still nothing has really helped. So that is something that I beg the board, moving forward, to please come up with some really creative solutions to do that. I am deeply touched by Edison Township for their faith in me, for electing me to two terms on the Board of Education. It has been one of the great honors of my life to do this and extended my career in education in Edison, six and a half years, Jerry, beyond my retirement from administration in the district. As was mentioned, also, my work with the Wingman program and social-emotional learning has been very much in the forefront of my life for the last few years. I do want to tell you that the Wingman program is continuing. It has metamorphized into a kind of a different look right now. But I have been getting reports from principals around the district that the program is up and running and the children are very excited about it because I heard on the way here tonight that the social-emotional situation of our children today is just going down the tubes faster and faster. And so the more that we can build those children up and Dr. Bragan gave a report to us this week about all the other things aside from the Wingman program that Edison has done to support social-emotional learning. And I think at this time, our staff needs social-emotional support as well. All of you, the teachers, the paras, aides, nurses, custodians, secretaries, the entire district. Everybody is hurting right now and it is important for us to work together. Tonight was a little like being at your own funeral. I got to hear all the things that people will probably say and I won't get to hear, so thank you very much. Being on the Board of Education, though, is being a part of a family. And I want to be very clear about this. Yes, we have had our moments and some have been very ugly and some have been very triumphant and wonderful. But this is a family and families disagree. And that's how you make decisions, solid decisions, is when you disagree and you listen to each other and you work together to make the world a better place and to make the school system a better place. I want to say to the parents, be brave, be patient, be supportive. We need you now more than we ever have. And to our students, you also be brave. Take the joy in learning that's there for you. That's the most important thing. You have to be joyful for learning. It's the most important things in our lives. And by the way, although most people think I'm disappearing from view, I'm not. Aside from working with my little granddaughter Lily, come on! That's what she says to me now all the time. Come on! She's 15 months old and she is just adorable. But aside from being with Lily a couple of times a week babysitting, I am writing a book. It's something that I've wanted to do for a very long time on my father and his experiences during World War II. He was a medic with the First Army Corps of Engineers and fought in five major battles during the war, including D-Day and the Battle of the Bulge and on and on. I have some great stories to tell about him. He left over 500 pictures that he took during the war and my brother has all the negatives. Most of this material was destroyed in a fire at the Eisenhower Library in 1952. So I know that I have some really terrific stuff to use for the book as well as all of the letters that my father wrote to my mother during the war. And they barely knew each other when they first started corresponding. And by the end of the war, she was the first person that he went to see after his ship came into New York. So I am busy working on the book. I have some other projects in the wings. And so that is where I am at at this point in time. I thank everybody, all of you, for everything that you have done for me in my lengthy career here in Edison. Thank you all so much and thank you for your kind words.
Thank you.
One more thing, just a note on Falcone. Falcone has been like a little sister to me. I keep telling her that. Our relationship goes far beyond Board of Ed. And then what can you say about Dan Michaud? What can you say? He is irreplaceable and he is a very dear friend and I know that we will continue to see each other. Best wishes.
Thank you, Beth. Dan, would you like to say anything?
Yeah.
Dan's another soft-spoken person.
This was a real tough decision for me to make to retire at this point in time. But I did feel it's, you know, I've been here 30, almost 35 years. I'm 67. I know Bernadette and my family have been pushing me to, they said, you know, "When you come home, you're so stressed out sometimes." But I really felt I really needed to take the time to retire. I do have to say that the reason why I was as competent as I was was a lot had to do with the people that worked for me. And nobody, nobody more than Judy Cox, my secretary. She's been with me for 33 years. I couldn't have done it without her. I swear. She's irreplaceable to me and I know she wasn't ready for me to leave, but I just, I had to make this move. I am very proud of what I was able to accomplish in this district. When I first started here, the budget was well under $100 million. Now we're pressing $270 million. We had 10,500 kids when I started in '86. Now we're pressing 17,000. We've done a lot of things in Edison. I think the quality of the education here is unsurpassed in the state, in my opinion. And I swear to you, I have tried to be as cost-effective as I possibly could on everything I've done and I really appreciate everybody's support that they've given me over the years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Bragan, would you like to say anything?
About Fowl.
We're going to get to Fowl. Fowl, I'm going this way.
Hard to follow that, but just for our board members that are leaving, thank you for all that you've done. You know, Beth, I've known you over the years and Faguni, I've just got to know you this year. And your contributions to the board and on behalf of the children of Edison are outstanding and astounding. So thank you for all your efforts. And as board members, you know, I joke about it sometimes. I get paid to be here. I get paid to do what I do every day and I love it. But you guys do it and you volunteer and you get nothing for it. And sometimes you get a lot of grief and a lot of time away from your families. So we all appreciate it. Dan, I've known you since you were here when I was a student here and I'm going to miss you. I don't know what else to say. And I appreciate you stayed on a little longer than you might have to help me with the transition. As everybody said here, you're irreplaceable and I'm going to miss you, my friend.
I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Faguni?
This has been one of the most challenging and humbling experiences of my life. When I ran for school board, I ran because I thought the school district could do a better job preparing our students for the financial responsibilities that come along with attending high-priced colleges and universities. I believe that by adding financial literacy classes and through the creation of dual enrollment programs with local colleges, students could manage to seek higher education without collecting a mountain of debt. Over the course of the last three years, we as a district have made many strides towards achieving that goal. I am extremely proud of this achievement and much of that credit for implementing that vision goes to Dr. Bragan and our chief academic officers. When I ran for this board position, I could never have imagined that I would be subject to so much scrutiny, locally and nationally, especially for a volunteer position that offers nothing in return except the satisfaction of knowing you're making a difference in students' lives. From journalists randomly showing up at your door, people trying to tarnish your reputation for their personal gain, all of this has been extremely challenging and disheartening for me. But I have always tried to serve my role with integrity. If I was able to significantly impact even one child's future, it was all worth it. There are some thoughts I wanted to share with the board. Right now, people are scared. Students, teachers, parents, everyone is scared because of the pandemic. The long-term effects it will have on our health, our children's physical and emotional well-being are still unknown. The next few months will be crucial as some really tough decisions will need to be made. As a board, it is more important now, more than ever, to not get distracted by the noise around you. It is... As a board, it is more important than ever not to let the noise distract you away from what you are here to do and that is to move this district forward. Remember, your actions will set the tone for the entire district. Being told that you are appreciated is one of the simplest and most uplifting things you can hear. So thank you to the board for the recognition that you have given me. Thank you to all the people who have messaged me over the last few days and all the people who have come out tonight. Thank you to all those voters who put their faith in me three years ago and elected me to this position. Beth and Dan, it's been an incredible honor to serve alongside with you and I am super excited to go into retirement with you. It's been one heck of a ride. Finally, even though the faces on this board may change, the vision is still the same and that is for Edison to be a beacon of light that has always been. Happy holidays and continue to shine bright, Edison.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to public comments. Ooh, a lot of hands. We're going to start in the back with Councilman Brescher. I recognize them. It's the bandana. No one spoke there.
No one spoke. No one spoke there.
Yeah, I'm going to talk through a mask.
Yeah.
So I think we'll be okay.
Yeah.
It's been a while since I walked down that aisle.
Name my address, please.
Oh.
Oh, Richard Brescher, 868 Grove Avenue, Edison. I'd like to, well, Dan has been here for 33 years, 34?
Thirty-four and a half.
Thirty-four and a half years, which is commendable to stay in any position for that amount of time. I'd be hard-pressed if Dan could probably name every superintendent and every board member that he's come across in all these years. Yet I guess he's been sitting in that chair during all this time. And the district itself, you know, is made up of our employees. They're the ones that drive our teachers, our staff. Everybody here is the ones that drive our education process. The board, I'm very thankful for because the board gives a direction that we're looking to go in. And that direction is the same one that gave me, myself, the education that I received here that I appreciate. And I appreciated it enough that I brought my own children back here. So a lot of that, you know, Dan, you might not have been instructing them, but you know, being part of that wheel, you know, really does mean a lot. But I will tell you this. After working 30-something years, to retire is really not that bad. You're going to enjoy it, I promise you, because I'm having a grand all-time now. To my board members that are retiring, that are on both sides, so it's very difficult here, the way that you both put it was probably the best. Beth talked about family. And I've got to be honest with you. Everybody but Carol I worked with, but Carol I spent a lot of time with on the phone anyway. But working together as family, and the public doesn't understand that. They think that the board argues. The board doesn't argue. You're all in the same direction. The only difference is whether we're going to give instruction time for 22 minutes or 27 minutes. Everybody does agree that they need the instruction time. The disagreement comes in that little tiny area and it's all for the betterment of the students here in Edison. And I appreciate, you know, all the work that everybody did and still does here. And the part that nobody here really understands is, I know none of you are getting rich by this and I know that none of you have some kind of ultimate power that has put you here in what we hear out in the public, but that you did it to make a difference here. You took... You took time away from all your families. You took time out of your own life that you gave to this township. And, uh, thank you both for your time. I, I appreciate it, I don't know how else to put it. But good luck. I know you'll be very busy. You, I know, are busy still. I don't know how you found the time to, to give us at the board. Um, but it was a pleasure working with, with both of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brusher. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Yeah. I can't recognize people with the mask, I'm sorry. Oh. Mr. Pandya, I'm sorry.
Mask is a little up, sorry.
Yeah, it's tough to see.
I can take my mask off?
Yes, name and address, please.
Yash Pandya, Twenty Arbor Circle. Good evening, everyone. It's truly a bittersweet night here for us today. Uh, Ms. Maroni, Mr. Mashad, and Mrs. Patel are wrapping up their terms and their years of service with us. And I wish to echo some of the things that the board members have said here to us tonight. Thank you, and I'd like to express my sincere gratitude for everything that you've done, for the Edison Board of Education, for the citizens, for the teachers, for the students, and for all of Edison in the three years and the thirty-three, thirty-four years that you've been with us. And I wish you all the best in your future endeavors and the years to come. And I've truly also have learned a lot from you in the short period that we've worked together here in Edison. Um, and the next point I'd like to make is I'd like to thank the new board-elect members that are, that will be joining us in January twenty-twenty-one. I wish them all the best and I look forward to working with them and seeing the new initiatives that they have to bring to the table as well. Um, and as we're coming to the end of the year, year twenty-twenty, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy holidays and a very safe and prosperous new year. Uh, so thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone here that came here tonight at the end of the year. So happy holidays, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Man, we don't have a garbage can there, so just... No, again, you're gonna last, you're gonna last. I saved the last for best, the best for last, the last for best. It's already wiped, he wiped it.
Good evening, Dr. Bregan and board members. Padmaja Chinta from Edison. I just wanted to come here today simply to acknowledge and appreciate the contributions of two very valuable board members, Falguni and Beth. You know, you both have been part of this board ever since I started coming to these meetings and getting involved. So you have become kind of like identity of the board for me in some ways and maybe for a lot of other people too. You know, being a board member is often a thankless job and not an easy, definitely not an easy one. In all the time that I have seen you in action, you have always been very professional. Um, I appreciate and commend the, your commitment and your dedication. I especially appreciate your independence. Now, it takes courage to stand up for what you believe in. It takes courage to not take the easy or the popular or the majority way out. And both of you have demonstrated that multiple times. You know, a lot of the work that you have done, you have done behind the scenes and did not care about publicity. But I want you to know that people do take notice and appreciate it, even if silently. I also hope and wish that the new members would take a page from you in being independent and in putting the interest of the kids and caring for kids enough to build bridges with everyone and to find compromises. So I'm, as a parent, I'm very grateful for your service and I wish you the best of luck for your next, you know, phase of your life, whatever that may be. I also want to give a shout-out to Dan. You know, for what you have done, for how long you have done, I don't, I think you're the definition of dedication. I may not know all the things that you do behind the scenes, but watching you in these board meetings, you have always been respectful, substantive, to the point and on point, and that will be missed. So thank you, everyone, and I wish happy holidays to all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Deepa Squal.
Tony Deepa Squal, Two Pine Street. Um, I also want to echo what everybody else is saying about Fal and Beth. Um, you know, at some of the meetings, you know, I've, I've left going, wow, they were brave in, in the decisions and the comments that they made at this meeting, even if it was just them standing there alone. And, you know, the, um, just the importance of just standing your ground in what your beliefs are and maybe not going with the tide of the public or the other board members. You know, so I, I just, the, the, the one word that just keeps coming to mind for both of you is just bravery. And you both have been respectful in the decisions that you've made and the comments you've made. And, um, as Patty said, you know, as future board members, whoever gets on this board in the future, you two are fine examples of how to be a board member is to be respectful and to decide on your own what you feel is best for this district and the kids. So I want to thank you both for, for the work you guys have done here. And Dan, as everybody else has said, you know your stuff. I mean, I, I asked Dan a question and it's either just like that, or it's I'll shoot you an email, or listen, a parent, you know, asked about a busing question or had a busing issue. And it was, well, just tell him to contact me. And I'm like, but, you know, you know, you're busy, you're, no, tell him to contact me. Um, you know, that, that just shows your dedication and just the, uh, the love for your job. And, and being at a job for so long, you have to love what you do. And that's, that's what we, we have seen over these years is that you love what you do. So thank you, Dan. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Deepa Squal. And Mr. Brunner? I think he wiped it down. I think he wiped it for you.
Okay.
Say that for the next one.
I'll throw that one away.
We're on a budget here.
Bill Brunner, two-fifteen Lorraine Avenue. I'm here tonight, uh, no disrespect to the two board members that are retiring, but I'm here tonight because Dan is retiring. Dan and I go back a long way. I don't know if he knows or not, but I've been coming to these meetings as long as you've been here. In fact, probably a year or two before, since my youngest child graduated in nineteen-eighty-five. People often ask me, what are we ever gonna do if Dan leaves? And for years, we just said, well, he's not gonna leave. But now you are. And it'll be interesting to see what happens with you gone. Uh, I'm sure Dr. Bregan once in a while might call you up for a little advice. I know that if you choose to go to work again, there are many, many school districts in this state that'll be welcoming you with open arms, even if it's nothing more than as a consultant, not as a permanent piece of, a permanent job, but as a consultant, because with your knowledge of everything, they can't go wrong. Dan, I consider it a privilege to have, to have known you all these years. And I certainly wish you well, no matter what you do.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner. Good seeing you. Mr. Ross?
Good evening, Mr. Ross. Um, Principal Edison High School, President of the Edison Principals and Supervisors Association. Um, first, I wanted to thank Ms. Conway for letting everybody know what's great about Edison High. Uh, we missed the holiday concerts too. And I think if you check our website, the Tri-M Music Honor Society did some sing-alongs and some other great videos that were fantastic. Um, from the EPSA, I'd like to thank Ms. Maroni and Ms. Patel, who I had the opportunity to work with both of you for your years of service. Um, but for principals, we're really not supposed to talk to you guys. So the person that helps us out has always been Mr. Dan Mashad for as long as I've been here. Uh, being that this is twenty-twenty, we had ordered you a plaque, but since it's twenty-twenty, it didn't get here yet. So I'm gonna read to you what the plaque's gonna say when we get it to you. Um, presented as twenty-second day of December twenty-twenty, in recognition for your over thirty years of service to the Edison School District as business administrator and board secretary for being at steady hand through decades of different storms, the voice on the end of the phone when principals are in need, a magician with the numbers to keep our funds from running dry, the man counting all the votes and abstentions from the mundane to the bizarre. In short, the man that got things done for the administration, staff, and students of the Edison Township Public School District since nineteen-eighty-six. For that, the Edison Principals and Supervisors Association are grateful beyond words. It's been an honor to work with you. May your retirement be longer than a million board meetings and as joyous as a Yankee championship parade. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Hervnik? Mr. Hervnik? Revnik, I'm sorry, Revnik. You have an A, wrong shirt.
I think you wiped down. Okay. Uh, first of all, good evening. Been a while since I've been here. I've been a little under the weather, uh, health-wise myself. So I did wanna congratulate Mr. Shi, I know Ms. White is in the audience, and Mohan, uh, on your election to the board. Um, it's nice to fact that two of our board members are leaving of their own fruition, that they weren't beat in the election. So, you know, congratulations and hopefully we'll have a good working relationship as we, you know, continue down the road with our association. There is one, I didn't really come to talk about this, I really came for two or three people here. But I do want to mention, one thing that disturbed me a little bit was with the curriculum report about the applied calculus course. Um, you know, I know we're trying to get kids the degree from Middlesex County College, but the applied calculus course actually be, goes beyond Calc III. First of all, it starts off with a continuation of Calculus II, which finishes the curriculum because our regular AB and BC calc courses cover about one and about two-thirds of a semester of Calc II at the college level. So we still have to start off finishing the concepts from the remainder of Calc II. And then we get into, actually right now, I'm teaching differential equations, which is Calc IV at the college level. Then we go back and do series and parametrics, polars, which is rushed in for the AP test. Very important stuff, especially the series, which students seem to struggle on. And then toward the end of the year, we actually do some multivariable calculus, which is Calc III. So I understand the concept of trying to get the kids. I am a little disturbed that as being the teacher of the course, I was never even talked to or consulted. It was mentioned to me, in fact, Dr. Bregan in a meeting asked me about the course, you know, and I told him, well, in the time of STEM, because it was talked about even eliminating the course because of numbers, but yet I have two sections with forty-nine total students in it this year. You know, and in a STEM environment, I don't see why we would deny kids having, you know, more math. So that's all I want to say about that. But the real reason why I came really was for the people that we just talked about. Um, as board members and for the new board members coming on, I've always been of the philosophy, we are not a business. Yes, there's a fiscal part to us and Mr. Mashad has done a great job with that, which I'll talk in a few minutes. But it's not about a business. It's really about doing, and yes, there is a fiscal responsibility to communities and taxpayers, but it's really about what's best for the education of the children of the city. Because they are the future of our city, they are the future of our country. So it's all about them first. And I gotta say, the two board members that are leaving this, my experience with them has always been that it has been about the education first. And I think that's important. Fal, I'll start self for you first. I haven't had much dealings with you, but the one or two things that always stick out with me was you've always listened, gave full attention whenever I know we talked or discussed something. And the one that always sticks out with me with you is when I presented back when we had the issues with the health insurance. And I could just see, look in your eyes and you were like, yeah, I get it. So I really do appreciate it. I wish you all the best. And as always, I thank you for your service to the board. We don't always agree on everything, but I always respect the people that give up their time to come out here and volunteer for what's best for the students and the communities of our school. Beth, you actually stole a little my thunder. In nineteen-eighty-eight, I walked through the doors of J.P. Stevens for the first time as a student teacher and eventually right into teaching. You were an English teacher while I was, you know, math teacher. We were colleagues as, as teachers. You moved up through the ranks as a vice principal, principal, administrator. We worked together as, for union perspective, as an administrator. In fact, one of the things that sticks out with me was, if you remember, I think it was your last year, I had an old book from J.P. Stevens from the early nineties. And we were going through the list of the staff when we were both there. And there were very few left. Now there's even less. So again, I wish you all the best, you and your family. You know, I knew your dad even before you, I know we've discussed that, I used to umpire baseball for him. Um, sitting at some football games with you and your husband when I used to go with my dad, it really has been a pleasure. And your legacy, of course, is the wingman. And I think that shows your dedication and commitments to the students of, of the district. Dan, I don't know what to say. I mean, you and I have been working together for about fifteen years with contract, with other things, with union, but especially with the numbers. You and I are basically counterparts. You do what you do for the district, I do the same thing barely for the association. You are the most honorable man I know. It has been a pleasure to work with you. I've been saying for a number of years, the biggest loss to this district is gonna be when Dan Mashad retires. I don't know how to replace you. Quite honestly, I always said, I think they screwed up fifteen years ago. They should have asked me to go and get my BA certifications so I can replace you. But whatever, that's the, you know, in hindsight. Now, now I'm too close to retirement myself, I guess. But, you know, really, it is, you've lived through so much. Super, uh, superintendents, administrators, principals, staff has come and gone. You have been the constant in this district up at that, at center. In fact, quite honestly, I think they should name it the Dan Mashad at Center. Your hours, the, the commitment, I see, I see basically you and me being very similar. You know, Jeff Bowen has always said, Matt's a workhorse, the hours I put in, the dedication, obviously, and working with the numbers and everything else. I know there's times, and we've been on the phone, eight o'clock at night on the weekend, you have my number, I have yours. When I see your name come up, I answer it immediately and I know you've always done the same with me. I've always appreciated the respect you've given me. You may not remember, but in two contracts ago, I handed over salary, guys, I created, he said, I'm sure they're right, Matt did them, it, I'm sure they're good. And that, to me, that's like the greatest respect you can give someone, just confidence in the ability. You know, a couple of months ago, I said that there's two people that can't retire before me, that is Gail Polakowski and Dan Mashad. I said, I gotta go out together because those are the two most people I respect most in this district. No offense, Dr. Bregan, but I know, I know you a while as well. And I definitely respect you as well. But, um, you know, unfortunately, that day has come. And again, you've been through a lot. That four o'clock in the morning meeting, the two of us walked out together, if you remember. You know, working together, Ron Belandia, I have to throw this in there. He made a comment to us when he was here. One of the reasons why he wanted to come here was to work with you. Because he knows that you were one of the best, if not the best, business administrator in the district. And my response was, yeah, we know. We know that.
Mr. Hervnik, your six minutes is up.
I know. Give me, give me one more minute. So anyway, you know, we've always, Jeff and I kid around and say, if anybody knows where the bodies are buried here in Edison, it's Dan Mashad. So, uh, anyway, Dan, really, um, great, great respect for you, you know. Someone's gonna be sitting your seat at some point, but they're never gonna replace you. No one will know the history of the district like you do, what's gone on. You know, you've always, I've always appreciated also the fact that you've always stayed out of the political part of it. You know, and I know we've discussed that. And finally, as a big Yankee fan, I'm gonna miss our conversations about the Yankees as well when I'm in your office and, you know, during baseball season and all. So I wish you all the health, happiness, do what you wanna do. Like was said before, I don't know any retired that's ever come back and say, I regret retiring. You know, they always come back and look about five years younger.
Right.
So hopefully we'll stay in, you know, I know we'll stay in communication. Like I think Ralph said before about getting together, I know Jeff talked to you the other day, was in. And really, on the, on behalf of myself and the ETA, we definitely appreciate all the years of service to the district, the working relationship we've had, and I will greatly miss you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Brett.
Dan and Beth, I didn't work with you a lot, but I heard great things about you guys, especially, you know, the kind of six and a half years that you spent on the board. And I think the only person, you know, very few board members can actually say that, you know, seven, eight, nine years. And Dan, from the financial perspective, I would say that you'll be damned if you don't spend the money, you'll be damned if you spend more. And I think it is, I know the pain of, you know, trying to make everybody happy, and no matter what happens, at the end of the day, you'll be beaten to death, saying that, "Okay, you didn't do this." They forget the 95% of good things that you have done, the only 5% wholly something that people want to see it. I know the pain that it goes through it, and I'm sure that this retirement will give you all you need, and I'm sure that you'll be enjoying your time of retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Fowl, you know, looking at you, I can say only one word, actions speak louder than words. I know people say that you speak less, but your actions are more stronger. And the pandemic time, the kind of support that you have provided to the parents and the students is extraordinary. I know you have taken a conscious decision of not, you know, running again, even though it is only three years. Lot many people after they decide not to come back, they think that, "I should've done this, I could've done this." And I'm sure that you have done all your work, all the decisions with a lot more conviction, and I assure you that you will not regret that one decision that you have taken is wrong. I think the parents, somebody said that, you may not get calls and say, "I appreciate you for what decisions that you have taken." I know the kind of win-win situations that you have created in the last few months, but certainly you are one among those respected Board of Education members, and we truly, truly miss you. So, Mr. Bregan, I would like to address two things, I'm sure that it's a, you know, a moment that, if you retire, one, Dan retiring, and two of BOE members are leaving, but I also would like to congratulate Mr. Shi for his third term. It's a tremendous feat, it's not easy, I know that, how much people will point, the way that I told you, Dan, that that 5% people point, I'm sure that Shi people has thrown stones at you for the remaining 5%, and they don't care, the 95% of good work you do, you did. And I also congratulate Mr. Mohin and Mrs. White for their selection to the January 4th Board. So, Mr. Bregan, I would like to say two things that I hope you'll take it with a pinch of salt. The STAR assessment and Exact Path. I thought that parents didn't know it, students didn't know it, and to our surprise, even your board members don't know it, Board of Education members didn't know that. What was the rationale to change STAR in the first thing? Exact Path was introduced last year. Why, as a pilot, not as a regular one, means last year, both STAR and Exact Path, in parallel, they conducted. As Shannon Peng said, you already have too many exams, too much pressure on our kids, too many tests, and we were not told or given a rationale that why Exact Path was chosen over STAR. STAR was a truly, truly a great tool, and I hope at least they will get an answer from you guys, that why Exact Path was chosen over STAR. Because, to be honest, I reached out to three or four board members, and they didn't have an answer. So, I appreciate if you can share that, who took the decision, why there was a pilot last year which was not shared with the parents, and now today, the placement criteria is in limbo. Till today, no parents know about the placement criteria, and I'm sure that by the time March comes in, all the parents will jump on the BOE members in the social media, that, "Oh, you guys didn't do a good job." Obviously, BOE members are not at fault, I think the decision-making has to be solid at the beginning of the year, and today, December, we are still talking about STAR versus Exact Path. And I also have a recommendation, Mr. Bregan, for the esports. I don't know whether high schools has esports as a clubs. Please introduce it, my son is going through it, it's a lot of effort. As she mentioned, she wants to introduce AP Bio in the early stages, and more APs and more technologies. Please don't put the kids through the esports, it's, kids love to jump on it, my son paid a $40 something and joined the club, and he spent more time than an electro subject on the esports. I would rather like you to pilot esports as a club next year in the high school, take the feedback, and see their grades, that how they're doing it well, because I don't want you guys to introduce esports as a subject without knowing the implications of the core subjects. By the time they come to the senior year, if the college's rejection letters comes in, I don't want them to regret that they chose esports over the subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patel?
Good evening, guys, thank you. First and foremost, I wanna thank Beth, Dan, and Fowl for serving on the board as you have, and the administration. You guys are a tremendous help, and you will be missed, as they are all saying, Dan, because $260 million budget is very hard to handle, and you've done it so well. Fowl, we've had our talks, and I'm definitely gonna miss you here, but those are some heavy shoes I'm gonna have to fill, as well as Beth's. And for your first campaign, I was there with you guys as well, and for any future campaigns you decide to go on, I will be there with you as well, all right? And other than that, I wanna wish everyone a very happy holiday, enjoy, be safe, and lots of love and cheers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Maria, Orchid 83 Jefferson. Thank you, Daniel, for your wonderful years of support to the Edison Public School System. We really appreciated everything you did. I view you as the wizard, and doing your magic for all our children and their future. Thank you. Beth, it has been a pleasure to see you, working the six and a half years of dedication, and your spirit is outstanding. Thank you for all the children that you've encouraged. And Fanguni, thank you for all your representation and to help the children of the Edison School District. We appreciate you and we value you. The other thing I wanna say is, my son, Jack, has been trying to get the esports for quite some time. He has a petition, and he has a lot of students that were interested, so he's very excited about the esports. He's also doing his junior project on it. So, if you have any information, I'm sure you'd be happy to help. And thank you, happy holidays to everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and thank you for everything that you do for the children of Edison.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Joseph Johnson, 407 Durham Avenue. I too would like to echo my sentiments to the board members who are leaving, as well as Dan. I would just share a brief story about each, all three of you guys. I don't know if many people know this, but Ms. Maroni, I'll take this off, was actually my middle school principal way back in the day, so I would get called down ever so often. But I'm happy to establish a friendship with you, I'm, you're one of the one, the couple of people who I first started coming, you know, it's just nice to really have a mentor and someone to guide you throughout the whole process. And Dan, I do remember the, when we took our trip to Monmouth, and the bus was just a tad bit late, and everyone's like, "Call Dan, call Dan," and within 15 minutes, the bus came, and it just speaks to the excellence and the volume that you do, that you bring to this position, and the awesome, you know, perspective that you give on everybody else. And Fowl, I remember I invited you to the Lena Harris Mentorship Program banquet, and Fowl was one of the first couple of people that I reached out to on the board, actually, and she helped me organize the program and put it together. So, I thank you, and you were the ones that actually suggested, you know, saying, "Hey, maybe you should expand to Edison High." So, I thank you for your input, and I thank you for your advice. So, I might, I might shift just a little bit. So, as the year comes to a close, I cannot help but think of the great job all of our awesome Edison Board of Education staff, administration, and teachers have done throughout this tumultuous time and throughout this tumultuous school year. We have suffered through immense physical, mental, and emotional lifestyle changes during the stressful shift to virtual learning. The onset of COVID-19 has shifted our mindsets, but we continue to be successfully, excuse me, we have continued to successfully educate our beloved Edison students, and that is all due to our leadership and staff and administration. I'm extremely proud of all the hard work we as a community have done, and I look in anticipation for what is to come in 2021 and for the years ahead. Throughout my time in the last few board meetings, I actually have listened intently to the discourse regarding diversity and inclusion for the upcoming 2021 school year. I brought this book with me entitled, "I Know Why the Cagebird Sings" by Maya Angelou. It dives into the struggle of African-Americans and the struggles of African-American youth during adolescence. This memoir highlights the protagonist, Maya Angelou, as she grows up trying to discover her identity in the context of the United States. She begins to question her sexuality, her culture, and references, and as well as ethnicity, with the goal of trying to develop her own personality. And during my time at JP Stevens, I too struggled to find my identity. I confided with people that looked like me, dressed like me, and acted like me, not realizing that I was falling into the depths of stereotypes and conventional norms. I was not mature enough to reject the negative idioms coming my way. Therefore, I accepted my role and confided with as many African-Americans students as possible, hoping to be accepted. Now, I wonder if students who are in similar positions as myself feel comfortable around peers that have also similar backgrounds. Now, the question becomes, do students of other ethnicities conduct themselves in a similar manner? As Diwali has recently passed, I worry if our non-East Asian community truly understands the origin and value of the holiday. As the Chinese New Year approaches, I worry if our Chinese students feel comfortable sharing their culture and customs in a classroom setting. And as Black History Month approaches, I worry how we as a community are going to celebrate the consistent sacrifices that our ancestors have made to be here today. And so, during my tenure at Monmouth University, I interned with an office called the Office of General Counsel, and directly worked with the Office of Equity and Diversity. I found the Office of Equity and Diversity to be committed to educating and advancing the goals of educational reform in the context of inclusion and equity. This position is committed to advancing diversity and inclusion efforts that ensure everyone on campus feels welcome and supported. They are guarded by core values that embrace diversity, integrity, and excellence in teaching and learning. Their plan is to ensure a comprehensive, holistic diversity and inclusive agenda. So, just something that we can look forward to in 2021 is maybe adopting or creating a similar position here in Edison, New Jersey. This position will serve as a liaison between Edison residents and the Edison Township Administration, while also bridging the gap between our South Edison students and as well as our North Edison students. This proposed position will be volunteer and/or established, that would produce programs, data, and initiatives while making sure students feel comfortable expressing themselves in any and all walks of life. And to close, because I know my time is running up, together we can build a community that is strong and caring. With this position of community liaison, or whatever community representative that we discuss, we can and we will bridge the gap between our Edison administration, our Edison schools, and ultimately, our semi-divided residences. And as an education system that prides itself as nothing but excellence, let's be excellent and break the barriers that have existed in our schools for so long. And at this time, I would just like to send my heartfelt appreciations to Ms. Fanguni Patel, right over to my right, Mrs. Beth Maroni to my left, and Dr. Daniel Mashad. You all will be sincerely missed. You all have helped me so much in so many ways, and words cannot describe the impact you have made on me, as well as others in the community. And furthermore, I wish nothing but the best, ah, so close. I wish nothing but the best for the upcoming board members. I thank you all for your time, and once again, I appreciate all the sacrifices you have made thus far, I truly admire each and every one of you, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Excellent. You have about 10 seconds left. Anyone else?
Good job, Joey, thank you.
Yeah. No one else? Okay, a meeting, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Christo. I saved the best for last.
You don't save anything for last, you just don't wanna give me my rebuttal.
That's true. You have three meetings in January you can come to.
I'm waiting to see, wait, did you start again?
Nope.
You know you gotta wait when someone says their name, right? I'm testing you, I'm just making sure, all right? Christo, South Edison.
There you go. Now you start it.
I don't understand why people have to wipe this down when no one's wiping this down. Really doesn't make any sense, so I'm just not even touching anything. All right, so Dan, you're here until the 31st? You handle the Oprah requests? All right, I'm gonna flood you with some Oprah requests, keep you busy until the 31st, and, all right, they already found a new person taking over your spot?
Not yet.
Not yet.
No? Well, I'll definitely flood them with some Oprah requests, Dan, I know I didn't bother you with any, but that's because I like you, the next person coming in, they're getting a bunch. I won't, I won't bother you with any, I'll wait until after the 31st. I don't got much to say, so I'm gonna kill some time.
Don't you wanna talk about Mrs. Maroni and Mrs. Patel?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I do.
You can go there.
I love you, Ms. Maroni, you know that. I really just don't gotta repeat things that need to be said. Fanguni, the last time, I didn't talk about you too much the last time, but that's not because, you know, ignoring you or anything, it's just she defends the Greek-Armenian genocide, so I got a little more favoritism, doesn't mean, you know, I don't like you at all, I respect you a lot. Here in Edison, people can be scumbags a lot of the time, especially, no, I'm keeping it clean, especially people connected, you know, friends and family members of political people, so I'm sure you were given a hard time. I personally never gave you a hard time, because you're a lady, you're a beautiful lady, I would never give you a hard time in person, but, I mean, I'm guilty of, I had thought you were guilty, that was a mistake, and I was probably one of those people who also gave you a hard time. Not, not to you in person, but I wanna apologize for that too, and I wish more people would come up here and apologize as well. It's, it's too bad now that I found out you're a lawyer, they should've kept that quiet. What kind of law do you teach, Fanguni?
Immigration.
Immigration.
Immigration. Yeah, so Jerry, you know, I take most of my cases, I do pro se, I win most of my cases, I'm gonna win the next case coming my way, but, you know, there's times when I even need a lawyer, so, you know, not you. All right. Well, I know that some people went past their time limit, so I will also go past my time limit a little bit. If I'm not allowed, it's also discrimination, I'll file tort claims, so I will also go, one minute, I have to do a little, some threats, everyone's being too nice, some threats. I would like to let the attorney know Merry Christmas, you know, I'm just telling you Merry Christmas before I move on to the next. And there's times when I, I see the attorney warning members of the public that they can accuse BOE members, there's, no one ever mentions teachers, but certainly you can accuse BOE members, teachers, whatever it is, of whatever their heart desires. There's times when, in the, even when another BOE member accuses another BOE member of something, or just states their opinion, I see where you have to jump in and say, "Whoa, let me warn you," for slander or whatnot, and I just like to let, let it be known, you don't have to warn anybody in the public anymore about slander, because when it comes to matters of public interest, Board of Ed members, teachers, which is why I'm gonna win, already won my lawsuit, didn't get dismissed yet, but it's getting dismissed. So, you cannot no longer just threaten people like that no more. I understand there's other BOE members. There's, no one ever mentions teachers, but certainly you can accuse BOE members, teachers, whatever it is, of whatever their heart desires. There's times when, in the, even when another BOE member accuses another BOE member of something, or just states their opinion, I see where you have to jump in and say, "Whoa, let me warn you," for slander or whatnot, and I just like to let, let it be known, you don't have to warn anybody in the public anymore about slander, because when it comes to matters of public interest, Board of Ed members, teachers, which is why I'm gonna win, already won my lawsuit, didn't get dismissed yet, but it's getting dismissed. I understand there's other BOE members, they're kind of pushing you to do it, you might not want to do it yourself, and I've seen that from time to time. But again, members of the public, parents, you know, we should not be intimidating anybody to come up here and speak their mind. People will know, people will know when, when this lawsuit is over, how the Edison Teachers Education Association, Edison Democratic Organization, possibly even members of the Board of Education retaliate against members of the public they dislike, but that's neither here nor there. I'd like to say for Shannon Peng, you know, people, they speak for Fowl and Fanguni today, there's times I've actually witnessed people being very racist towards Shannon, and that's wrong, too. I'm sure other members, people were being racist to other members, too, probably she V, and Yuna probably being very disrespectful to you two as well, I don't know, but I've only witnessed it with Shannon, so I'm only gonna speak for Shannon from right now. I seen her getting out of a library meeting, they were very racist, very rude to her for no reason, just on, on the fact they disagreed with you on something, even though I thought you were right. I, I know my time, so I'm not being discriminated against.
I'm gonna give you about forty-five seconds, because I did do that with someone else.
I'll go fifty-five seconds.
Fifty-five, okay.
So, yeah, you know, so Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. I should be getting my rebuttal in, but you screwed me over on my time.
Yeah, I wanted you to get home and start enjoying the holidays.
Yeah, I want to go home, too. Oh, my time is over, all right, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Cristo. Happy holidays. Anyone else? All right, thank you, and Mrs. Blackburn?
I just wanted to say to everyone, if you could hear me, I don't know if you can or not, but I want to thank you all for the opportunity, for allowing us to represent you on behalf of my firm and behalf of me, and to thank you for everyone and helping and allowing us to help you and work with you through this most trying of times. We will be transitioning at the board's, at whatever time that is convenient for the board. So thank you all so much, I've learned so much, and it was so much appreciated working with both, with the board, your administration, and with the community. You've just been wonderful. So thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. All right, my last comment is, again, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday season, whatever you celebrate, please celebrate your family, be safe out there, take care of your family, and a healthy and happy new year. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Shi and Ms. Brannaker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.